April the 3rd, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The consent calendar has two items on it, the council work session minutes from February the 20th and the council meeting minutes from March the 20th.
I move approval of both, second?
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and the minutes are, those minutes are approved. This month of April has been designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and so I'd like to read a proclamation for the city of Monmouth. Whereas children are vital to our city's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of our community. Whereas communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources that they need to cope with, to stress and nurture their children, ensure all children go to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. And the witness, therefore, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Monmouth to be affixed on the third day of April 2018. And with that, I want to make everybody aware that there's activity tomorrow at the library in conjunction with, I believe it's Craft with a Cop, is the name of the program. And it's a chance for the kids to come by and do some crafts. And last year, I think Windmills was the craft, is that what it is again this year?
I remember I did Pen Wheels like we did last year, those were a little bit difficult, so I don't know what Detective Carter has this morning for us this time.
Okay, but it'll be a fun time, and that's from 2:30 to 4:00 at Monmouth Library. And we've been having a lot of new businesses come to town, and so I'm not going to name them because I'll probably miss somebody. But I was at the Curves Rubbing Cutting recently for their relocation on Highway 99, and it's real exciting to see them back in town. And with that, we'll go to reports from council representatives, boards, and commissions. Counselor Silvernagle?
Great, thank you. One senior advisory board met on March 27th. They, one of the things they announced was Beverly Schonholdt resigned from the board, so they've got another opening there. Psychology breakfast went well, so they'd had that, and seemed like they, they were very much behind doing that and continuing that process with Western. Another partnership with Western, they have Thursday exercise classes, and I guess they're going to be basically, they're learning to tailor them to an individual, so it's part of a class, I think, at Western, adaptive type physical training. So that's kind of neat to see them start that one. And they got the Victoria Tea coming on April 20th, they'll have two seedings, one at noon and one at 2:30 PM, and I believe they're $10 for the tickets for that. They've got a, their bus committee organization, their debt committee organization groups are both now starting to activate for both of those particular items. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Counselor Johnson?
They had a public hearing, could not adjourn.
That's it. All right. Counselor Sherman?
I gave the report on the last meeting of the tree advisory board at the last council meeting, but just to remind everybody, there's an Arbor Day celebration coming up on April 27th and 28th. 28th is a Saturday, and we're extending it to Saturday so more volunteers can participate. And another update as well is that, sorry, I'll use my microphone. The Veterans Memorial Tree, which is a redwood tree, it's not a Costridwood, it's a Sequoia redwood, in Madrona Park, and thank you, thank you to Paul Seber for helping me out. We had intended to place a plaque there in front of the tree on Arbor Day and have savages, a color guard, and Boy Scouts there. However, in looking at the tree, it seems to be having some issues, either with insect infestation, or water, or something. It's a, those Sequoia redwoods like living up in the Sierra Nevada Mountains, I don't know if this one is unhappy being here in Monmouth, Oregon. So I'm not sure that that will actually happen now. Is everybody clear on that? The placing of the plaque for the Veterans Memorial Tree, we don't want to do it in front of a dying tree. Thank you.
Counselor Carey? Just members of the council, I have to say that I forgot in my haste to get here on time, forgot my succinct notes relative to our MINENet meeting. So Scott, if I miss anything dramatic, maybe you can fill in for me, but the MINENet board did meet on 29 March, last Thursday, and, you know, sort of our normal update, sort of meeting, the finances continue to be stable. Actually, in the month of February, interestingly, the revenue jumped sort of inordinately at the same time the expenses went down. That's short-lived, you know, there's just sort of some things that alternate and fluctuate back and forth, but nonetheless, the finances remain stable with the company. There was a report on the managed Wi-Fi, we've got about 140 individuals who have signed up for that, and if you're unfamiliar with the managed Wi-Fi, I believe it's, I don't recall the fee, $10 a month or something, you can, in fact, rent a Wi-Fi device from MINENet, they will manage that for you. Upgrades that are necessary, they'll provide that. If you have difficulty, as often, at least I do, you know, you get kicked off your Wi-Fi or there's a problem with it, call them, they can do that remotely. It's a savings to them, they don't have to roll a truck to fix, you know, my Wi-Fi that's fouled up, and that's been promoted some, and for those that are interested, I would suggest you take a pretty good look at that. There was a discussion about sort of beginning to anticipate some financial decisions that we're going to have to make at the end, as our, as our debt payment comes up. The board did determine that we're going to carry forward approximately $200,000 into next year as part of our upgrade, you know, for our pond conversion that we've been talking about for agnoziom. And so that will modify a little bit the percentage that the company will pay in terms of the debt service, and it will increase slightly the amount that the cities will have to pay to backfill that. There'll be some, there were some other discussions that we had in an executive session, we have an executive session tonight, and some of the topics there will hinge on MINENet. So that concludes my report, and there's probably more, but I left my notes at home.
Is this Wi-Fi device different from a router?
It replaces your router.
Yeah, it would replace your router.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any community announcements, any activities that we need to be aware of?
I would note, and I should have more detail on this than I do, but I believe, I was hoping Marshall might be here, Marshall Guthrie, but I believe there's a spin bike event, is that on campus tomorrow?
At 11:00.
11:00 until 2:00, I believe, 2:30 perhaps. The spin bikes are bikes that will be available for rent, single use, the orange bikes, if you've been into urban areas, you've often seen the orange bikes on bike racks, they'll be on campus in orange racks there, 50 cents a ride, got a little basket in front. I did the YouTube thing in terms of how to get on and how to get out and all that kind of thing. You need to make, if you don't have transportation, you need to make a run to the grocery store or elsewhere, then that would be, especially if you live in the vicinity, if not on campus, in the vicinity of campus, I think it's got a chance to be a real nice service. So if you're interested in various forms of transportation on campus, I don't know, Roxanne, did you note the location, I'm assuming the Warner Center?
Warner Center, yes.
Yeah. 11 to 2:30 tomorrow. Drop by and ride an orange bike.
Right.
Yeah, you know, put on, that Saturday is the senior citizen breakfast over there in Saturday morning. It's usually a big thing, a lot of people show up, so.
So that breakfast is more than for senior citizens?
It's for anybody.
For anybody. But it's a fundraiser. And with that, Scott?
Yeah, I had a first meeting, the LSC Policy Committee on Telecommunications, and cities are typically kind of under assault for our franchise rights, ability to manage right-of-way fees, now we're going to get, start getting it from the federal level. There's a move by the FCC to basically start tripping back more and more what cities can do to regulate, you know, our right-of-way connections, the telecoms in there, so they're monitoring that, but it's not good, it's just going to be continued trying to carve away at what we have right now. Had a first meeting, our homelessness initiative, that's kind of a Salem primary focus, the Independence and Monmouth are also in the mix, we went through main strategies and had a good discussion, just getting a work plan laid out for that person. Highway 99, our utilities, electric and water, will be going in probably within two weeks in there. They said more and more, look, that's going to be a tough project, ODAT didn't allocate very much room for all the utilities, so it's going to be really careful and tight to be working in there, but it'll all get done at some point. Highway 51, that's the grant project where we got into the state transportation program, and it was about, it went from like a million dollars to a million and four, they just looked at it and it's up over like four million now. And so they asked us a question in the past, they said, hey, if you had, something had to give, would it be the center turn lane, or like the sidewalks and the bike lanes? And we said, let's lose the center turn lane. And so I, so they're re-scoping it right now, so in the near future, we're going to get a look at what a different type of project would look like, and see what the costs are, and then we can start getting some input on that. But the other thing, just got to have to control it, and since we're paying part of it, that's a concern. Budget, just going through all the department budgets, we're busy constructing that as we get closer there. Couple new businesses, just the mayor mentioned a couple, the Domino's has opened, apparently it's been pretty busy, pretty consistently. And then industrial, which is different from Monmouth down, and the industrial park down by our South Substation, kind of tucked in there by Brookdale, we actually have two industrial buildings going, and one will have a business, and then one will be a spec building, so those are all ready to go. And then, just a note from the agenda, you don't see the bike campground on here, for folks that are interested, the committee decided to pull back on that, they said, maybe it's better that we build support for bike tourism before we propose something like that, so they just took it back, and we'll focus on other projects for a while.
I have a question. Should Monmouth be expecting a fine for that sewage spill?
That's DEQ's discretion, we haven't heard anything in that regard, we have to just wait until they...
No rumblings from them? And also, how are we doing in regards to getting those water filtered, that water...
Yeah, we're actually making good progress at this point, so.
Okay, so we're not...
The last time we think they're going to be installed, I thought it was like July or August.
Is that going to make the deadline?
Yes, yeah, we'll be fine.
The State Health Department is kind of expensive if they come in and take over our water system.
Right, yeah, we'll be fine.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
99, has the bid been let on 99?
Yeah, so the water, and then we just did electric today.
No, but I mean, as far as ODAT's 99, have they let the bid yet?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, that's what I want to start date with, you know, me and Scott.
Yeah, oh, they're, they're going to start pretty soon, and what they're going to do is they're going to start at Hoffman and work their way back. So the theory is, is that the utilities are supposed to be out by the end of July, and then ODAT would move in at roughly that same time, and they start doing all their work within town.
On the deal with the sewer, the almost treated sewer to the, were we late on reporting to the public, or is that a misconception?
It was, there were a lot of misconceptions full around, so the interesting one is, so the key things is we responded really well. They caught it quickly, troubleshooting, really good troubleshooting, we had a piece of equipment that just came back from being serviced, and then it failed, there was a crack in it, we had electrical fire in the building at the same time, but then, so protocol is, you fix it, you notify DEQ, and then it's DEQ's discretion on how you provide notice. And so initially, when it happens, it's a Saturday, they said, don't worry about it, a lot of times when you have high water, you get a good dilution, so they didn't worry about it, but our staff was kind of like, well, I'm sorry, back up, we did post notices along the river, but as far as any of like a press release, we said, we called them on Monday and said, shouldn't we do something? At that point, they're like, yes, but we want you to include the test results in the notice, and so that delayed us another two days getting the test results back, and so that's where we ended up, being fairly delayed. So we, you know, you go to DEQ, take their direction, and you go from there, but then, yeah, some of the things that came to the paper, they were indicating that they told us earlier, which didn't happen. Interesting one though, just as far as things go, I think the key thing that we're already hit on, this is basically treated water, almost done, just one last shot of disinfection, so it wasn't raw. Other thing is, as far as the volume goes, it actually improved the water quality of the land when it hit it. We had a rate of 11 above, and then below was actually nine, just a perspective, the water that we had discharged in was about 1.3% of what was in the land.
If I can just say, oh, sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to say that I would like to know probably sooner, because two citizens contacted me and said, I saw these signs down by the water, what's going on? And I was really uncomfortable that I wasn't able to say, I don't know what's going on. So is there a way we can improve from this?
That was a tricky one, because on the weekend, and so then we'd have to step through, because we didn't, other staff weren't aware of it until Monday, so we didn't, we were ready to, but I guess that could be possibly, we need to work that into a system if that's going to happen, you know, get a hold of Philson myself, maybe let you guys know, but it's, yeah, that's, yeah, that was an issue, that's another choice in there, so.
Yeah, so thank you, yeah, if we could work on that, I'd appreciate it. And also, the 60 to 100 billion dollar a year industry in bottled water in the United States is a direct result of general and pretty much irrational fear of the water that comes out of your tap. I think I'm drinking Monmouth water right now, right, fellas? But I think a lot of people here in any community of the United States would prefer that we err on too much information rather than not enough. So when we have an issue like this, I think, not, we don't want to do an information dump, so that people have to go through miles and miles of information to get what they're looking for, but it's never a good idea to say, well, gosh, maybe if we don't say anything about this, nobody will notice.
Yeah, that's not where we work.
No.
Yeah, we took our lead from DEQ, you do what DEQ says.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, it's time for citizen comments, this time is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Maximum of three minutes per item, please. And then, when you come up, if you could put your name in, say that you're from on the sign-in sheet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, bear with me one moment while I fill, fill my name in here. First and foremost, I'd like to, I'd like to thank you all for bringing up, bringing up the matter of the water, that was one of the points that I was going to, going to ask about tonight. I really appreciate, appreciate the discussion by, by the council tonight, it was something that was a little bit alarming to see come through the Statesman Journal. And one point that I'd like to add is I did do some quick, some quick math, and 1.3 million gallons, it's, it's a little bit of a difficult, difficult number to wrap your mind around, so putting that into perspective of usage, that's approximately what 150 households of four use in a month. So it's, it's a small percentage of the flow of the Alamat, but it's still significant, and I will say that it puts me a little bit more at ease hearing all of you speak about it tonight, and I did want to thank you about that, but just interject that note. The other piece that I wanted to, wanted to bring up tonight is the recent economic development survey that, that's been floating around, I believe the Facebook page and the city website, and once again, you know, thank you very much for putting this together, however, going, going through it, I feel a little bit disenchanted by, by the survey itself. There's a number of questions that I feel are quite slanted or difficult to give real meaningful and complete information back. One in particular, I'll read just two of the questions to you. What option do you feel the city could use more of? And then it lists restaurants, industrial jobs, commercial stores, et cetera, et cetera. But as, as a resident of Monmouth, I feel there's a number of these things that it could, that we could use more of, and that we could use attention to. And I understand that, you know, as, as an individual, my, my top choice might be restaurants, but someone else's top choice might be tourism attraction, however, if we're able to list multiples, there might be the consensus that while no one's top choice is everyone's agreement, but everyone thinks that maybe we all need more commercial stores, such as grocery, out-of-body apparel, what have you. So a little bit more nuance in this survey would be really appreciated for meaningful feedback, and there was, there was another, another question that really kind of struck me as coming, coming from left field, should the city reduce services such as police, parks and recreation, or the library to free up funds for economic development? And while I completely understand that everything comes from a finite pool, that's such a tough question to, to ask and, and to pose, and I don't, I don't know what the point of this survey in its current form really was. One has to think that these things are generated for, for a purpose, and if that's coming from the city, likely the purpose is to, to guide thought or to guide decision in the future, and I feel like this is, you know, not going to give a good snapshot of what the citizens feel or believe. So those are my thoughts, thank you very much for your service, and thank you for being here tonight.
I have a few questions about that survey as well, is this a good time to ask them?
Not really.
Is there ever a good time?
You could give Scott a call and talk with Scott about it, because...
How about with my fellow councilors, we have to meet in public.
I also had some questions about it when I received it, I would like to, to talk about it.
Work session.
We're on, we can go on next time.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else with non-agenda items?
Good evening, council members. Take, take a moment. One question, one quick question and one comment. I appreciate too the information about the spill into the river, and just one question, is the city required to take the lead of DEQ? Can the city act with prudence, obviously, and care independently, or is it required that the city wait for DEQ?
Required to wait.
Okay, thank you very much. The other comment, thank you for acknowledging the Child Abuse Awareness Month, I simply wanted to add that it's also Autism Awareness Month, and I want to thank the councilors and our audience for accepting my autistic grandson tonight, thank you.
Any other citizen comments? All right, at this time, we'll move...
Good evening. Dear Council, Mayor Milligan, my name is Kelly Carpenter, I have been a resident of Monmouth for a combined 13 years, I'm a wife and mother of two, and I have been one of your police officers for 11 years. Recently, my attention and the attention of other officers in the police department has been drawn to the many comments and motions at these meetings, and I feel compelled to address my concerns. I have heard flippant comments about the role of a police officer in the city of Monmouth, and the ill-conceived idea that all a Monmouth officer does is traffic stops. What I also hear is a lack of knowledge about our department and those people that staff it. Our office is comprised of hard-working men and women that are not only dedicated to the safety and security of our citizens, their officers are working 24 hours a day while most of you are sleeping in your beds to ensure the safety of our homes, property, and our lives. Our officers sacrifice countless hours with their children and spouses in order to protect and provide around-the-clock security for our city. My own family has felt the burden of missing out on events, or just time together while I'm working on a late call or working overtime shifts to ensure the city is constantly shielded. Do you know why these men and women shoulder this responsibility? Do you know why we toil and persevere despite all the negative talk about police in the media, as well as from members of our council? Because this is a calling. I was called here to work for your city and dedicate my career towards its safety. To those of you who say nothing happens in Monmouth, that is simply not true, but it also points out the fact that we are stealthily investigating our cases and protecting the privacy of the victims of the many crimes that we investigate. Anyway, I'm proud when I hear this statement, and that I know I'm doing my job by shielding those of you who are not in this service. It is true that we deny the call volume as Salem PD or any other larger agency, but we do have calls, many a day, some are more complex and take weeks or months to solve, and others can be wrapped up in 30 minutes to an hour. As I face you now, I know that some of you have called the police department for assistance in the past, and saying that you're, that we are an unnecessary drain on the city's budget is an ill-informed assumption. If you were to abolish our department, who would provide police services for our citizens? Who do you think that those, and do you think that those services would then be offered from another agency free of charge? And even if another agency would contact, contract with Monmouth, would you be providing your citizens with the best service? Our officers live here, their kids go to our schools, they coach the Little League teams, and they attend our churches, we are invested. I care deeply for this city, I have made it my home, I have invested in this city and this community, and I care for and respect its citizens. I have made the choice to continue to work here, despite lower pay, less special assignments, and smaller call load. I sacrificed my mental health and listened to the countless stories of abuse and torment of these victims who are brave enough to report what has happened to them. I have seen things I can never unsee, I have heard and witnessed depravity that some of you cannot even imagine, I have heard last breaths, I have held the hands of those stricken with grief, I have been a support for those victims of sexual and physical abuse, I have arrested the domestic abusers, I have arrested a man who murdered a toddler, I have arrested men and women who take pleasure in assaulting and hurting children and the disabled. We do these things because it is a calling, I was called here for you. As all of you know, the perception of police is not what it once was, I feel fortunate that I know the majority of the citizens in Monmouth are supportive of our department and our officers. What I ask tonight is for your support. Know that we are working hard for you, your families, and all those other people who live here. Know that we will continue to work hard and persevere despite the ill comments that have demeaned us and attempted to make light of what we do. We do not take these positions lightly, and neither should you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? So at this time, we'll move on to our business agenda? So at this time, we'll move on to our business agenda. Item one is a public hearing on local wetlands inventory, legislative amendment 18-01.
Good evening, members of the council mayor. Suzanne Dufresne, Development Director, here to present the staff report for legislative amendment 1801. This is for a public hearing to consider adoption of the Monmouth Local Wetland Inventory and related amendments to the Monmouth Comprehensive Plan and the Monmouth zoning ordinance. There are three main components to the legislative amendment that's here before you tonight for consideration for adoption, one of which is the formal adoption of the final Monmouth Local Wetland Inventory, which is included in your packets this evening. The second one is to consider amendments to the Monmouth Comprehensive Plan related to what's referred to as Goal Five that concerns natural resources, historic areas, and open spaces. And then the third component of legislative amendment 1801 is to consider adopting protection measures for riparian corridors and significant wetlands into the Monmouth City Code. So just to kind of briefly, and we've had a work session on this last February. The Planning Commission's also had a public hearing on March 21st where they recommended the council approve this legislative amendment. So just kind of touch on some benefits that come from wetland areas, water quality treatments, habitats. So there's kind of a number of criteria that can come into play on why it's determined significant. The local wetland inventory is a tool that we use not only as planners, but landlords, watershed councils, developers, to plan for more of a sustainable development that takes into consideration wetlands. So trying to be more proactive in our approach to planning and development and hopefully reduce some of the uncertainty that might come from not knowing the full extent and ramifications of properties that may be impacted by wetlands. So the thought is we are aware of those properties that may be impacted by that. We can plan for the sufficient time needed to potentially obtain permits for those wetland areas or to avoid them altogether if they're significant. Once, you know, the state requirements for completing the local wetland inventory, once you've identified these areas and which ones are significant resources, the next step is to adopt protection measures into your city comprehensive plan and city code. One of the ways this is done is through adoption of, again, protection ordinances. And there are what's called a safe harbor approach that cities are allowed to adopt and can be found to meet the state criteria for those protection measures if you use them. So that is the approach that our ordinances have prepared and drafted after those model ordinances, and those have been included in your packets. The Planning Commission level, we've had a number of work sessions to go through them in great detail and receive comments both from the Planning Commission and also from our local watershed council. And Department of State Lands and the Department of Land Conservation Development have also weighed in and provided comments on that to make sure that they comply with state administrative rules. So they've gone through a pretty rigorous process to get them to where they are today. So in particular, those protection ordinances would include two new chapters that are in Monmouth City Code, one of which would be safe harbor protections for riparian corridors. So these are the areas next to stream banks that are, again, found to be significant. So that's the main stem of Ash Creek and then also the north fork of Ash Creek is where it lies in the Monmouth city limits. And the protection ordinance would protect a buffer within 50 feet of the top of the stream bank of a significant riparian area. The second chapter that would also be proposed to be adopted is protections for significant wetlands, again, inside the city limits. And the ordinance would prevent the removal of fill of significant wetlands and require a 25-foot setback from the wetland's boundaries. So as I mentioned, the Planning Commission has held a public hearing that was on March 21st. They received several comments during the public hearing process. Several people testified in favor of adopting the Monmouth Local Wetland Inventory and related amendments, including the local watershed council and representatives from the Ash Creek Water Control District, and it concerns citizen as well as Department of State Lands. We did also receive a property owner in opposition to the adoption, and you received a letter from the property owner, Pat Steinoff, that's included in your packets. Ms. Steinoff has 31-acre property on Hoffman Road that does include mapped significant wetlands. And the letter in your packet outlines some of her concerns with the accuracy of the local wetland inventory mapping. And she's had a wetland consultant go out and recently look at her property. She's included some of those maps attached to the letter that show the boundary of wetlands on her property to be a lot less than are shown on the local wetland inventory maps. And the reason for this is that the local wetland inventory, while a tool, it's not done on a site-specific level. And really, the first step of development is to go out into a property, and it has to do a wetland determination or delineation that gets reviewed and approved by DSL. So that is the site-specific mapping for a big property. And we know that the boundaries will change from what our local wetland inventory maps show because of the local wetland inventory, again, is not done on a site-specific basis. It's done with fewer test holes and looking at aerial maps and flood mapping as well and soils. So we know that there will be refinements to the local wetland inventory over time. There's a letter in the package from, and also an email from Jever Brown with Department of State Lands to review Monmouth's local wetland inventory that comments on how that refinement process works as we get new, up-to-date information on site-specific mapping, those wetland delineations for properties as they go to develop. Those new wetland delineations will become basically a refinement letter to our local wetland inventory, and that's the most accurate information that will be used when we look at applying those protection ordinances. So there is a process built into place to recognize that new information as it comes forward. So that, I think that's primarily what I had prepared tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We can ask questions now, staff, and then if we have more questions after we hear testimony, then we can ask questions again.
Suzanne, you say it's not site-specific, yet it affects specific sites. How do we reconcile that? You know, so we did the assessment, we did the inventory, and we used a certain method. And because of the method we use, seemingly it could create a burden essentially on the landowner to go out and get their own assessment to compete with our assessment. So does that make sense?
Yes, but I'm not sure it's characterized. So when a property, again, so the local wetland inventory gives the best information we have now, which is better than the national wetland inventory, which is even of, you know, broader scale and less accurate information. So by doing the local wetland inventory, we're flagging properties that have presence of wetlands. And the first step in development is to go out and to determine where those specific boundaries are. So the local wetland inventory is giving better information earlier on that process. So both buyers and sellers know ahead of time before they go and do detailed development plans and pay those expensive fees to do development, they have a little bit more certainty on what they're working with and, you know, what may be the costs of having to mitigate or avoid those areas. So I would say that, you know, it's a better characterization to say the local wetland inventory is helping bring that more detailed information up earlier in the process so that it's not a surprise in that kind of 11th hour of development process.
So the process that the landowner goes through is a process, you're saying that they would have to go through that anyway if they were to develop the property?
That's right.
And so what, I guess in the absence of that, you know, just using Ms. Steinoff's property as an example, you know, ours says nearly all of the 31 acres is wetland. So how does that, I guess what force of color of law or force of law does that carry with it as compared to her? You know, if she goes in and then gets a new assessment that says, no, it's only 6.8 acres?
Yeah, as long as the key factor is DSL, as the regulatory agency, has to approve that new delineation.
The new report from the consultant.
Correct. Yeah, and then we use that. That becomes the new best available information. And, you know, the original local wetland inventory map was, you know, it's still there, but it's not what we use in terms of which portions of, you know, the actual wetland that needs to be preserved or mitigated is based on the new report and information that's done.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Well, I talked to you before on this. Still, it ends up being that the landowner has to take the initiative to change it and pay the cost, and we did a general overhaul. And I understand it's a flat program. This is what it's going to be in a certain area, this is what's going to be in a certain area. So you put the responsibility for the landowner with a tremendous amount of expense because we've already seen this through other developments, you know, and costs, just like our Power of Life stuff. I kind of don't like that in the long run because in 10 years, it may cost more than what the lands worth to try to get it out of this wetland. That's one thing I've talked to you about, and I'm kind of disappointed if there isn't a better system without having to pay for all the, go out and map it, test it, go to DSL, do all that stuff with an attorney and a land use person. So the cost is all, the burden is all on the landowner. That's all I got.
No doubt about it. It's expensive to develop properties with wetlands on them. I guess I would just comment that that expense has always been there. We're just trying to make sure all parties know earlier on in the process so that they can plan for it accordingly and not get surprised.
Yeah, if I can, I would say that the local wetland inventory doesn't add to the expense or the burden that a landowner would have to establish in order to develop a piece of property. Suzanne said they have to do that delineation anywhere if they're developing a wetland. This, again, the local inventory is mostly designed to signal to people that there are wetlands there. So Suzanne said there's less surprise when someone finds out as they go to develop that, oh, there's a wetland there.
Yeah, and hopefully that we'll use it as a city long-range planning tool as well if we're trying to acquire, you know, for example, parklands that we know is also valuable wetland property for flood retention or water quality or habitat, then, you know, maybe those are the areas that we try to target for acquisition, to purchase, you know, as well, for parkland as well. But, yeah.
How does the scope of the finding impact it? So in this, the majority of the property was found, but let's say you have 10 acres and just a little corner of it was found as part of a wetland inventory. And the person wanted to develop it, then would they have to do the whole thing? Would they have to do a specific inventory?
Right. If there's a portion of a wetland that's found on the property, then, yeah, then it triggers needing to find out specifically where those boundaries are.
What if there was no finding? If it's not, there's no part of it that's in the LWI?
So you're talking about a parcel that doesn't have any local...
Any identified wetland. Would they have to still go through the process?
So the city's not required to give notice to Department of State Lands in those cases if somebody's going to develop on them. And there's always kind of the cautionary, you know, there could be, you know, wetlands on property that don't get mapped either in the national wetland inventory. Our local wetland inventory is much more refined. But I know we have the consultant Eric Kenning in the audience that helped, that prepared the local wetland inventory. So I think he may be a good one to ask that question about. But, yeah, certainly, you know, the risk of somebody getting a stop work order for developing a property that didn't have a mapped local, you know, wetland on it is very less likely to happen, but I don't know if there's some strange case that there could be some additional small wetland area that, because this is only for wetlands half acre or greater in size.
Right.
So I guess there could potentially be one that's smaller than that and that is still controlled by the removal of fill wetland laws of the DSL and our report. Eric's a little bit there. He's a lot better expert on that issue than I am, so I'll let him weigh in on that one.
Hi, I'm Eric Kenning, Design Natural Resources Consulting. Just to add on to that question, correct, you know, if a site is not mapped...
Could you come up to the table, please?
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, when it is, when it does come down to the local wetland inventory, if there is a parcel that is not mapped as part of that local wetland inventory, like Susan had said, you know, we are looking at half acre or greater wetland areas. Ultimately, that due diligence for that property owner to kind of figure out, hey, are there wetlands on the site or not? Even though the LWI might not show that, you still might have wetlands on site. And ultimately, for myself, I do it quite a bit. I've been doing this for 15 years. When I deal with local wetland inventory issues in other municipalities, yeah, we do go do a site visit. Sometimes those LWIs are incorrect or it's based on previous historical data that has changed over time. But ultimately, they are used as a tool to kind of determine right up front if wetlands are present. But ultimately, it's up to the developer or the property owner to determine if wetlands are present on site or not. And that can easily be done by hiring a consultant such as myself, going on site and saying, hey, you've got potential wetlands, or no, you don't have any wetlands at all. Let me write you a letter. We can send that to DSL, so on and so forth. So there is a bit of a process to it. It's not, you know, the LWI doesn't cover everything, of course. I wish it could, but ultimately, it's definitely a good tool for the community to use.
And how accepting is DSL of an infinite consultant's recommendation or their findings?
Sure, definitely. So DSL does review all of our findings in terms of consultants. When we actually submit a wetland delineation report, they will review that and either concur with the findings or not, or, you know, find out exactly where the adjustments need to happen. For DSL, when it comes to properties that may or may not have wetlands on it, the public can actually contact DSL as well and contact them directly and say, hey, I don't have anything mapped on that property. In terms of LWI or NWI, can you take a look at it from an off-site perspective? They'll review the start, get aerial photographs, soils, maps, different layers that they can kind of do an off-site determination of. And they will actually provide a document to that individual saying, based on an off-site determination, we do not believe wetlands to be present based on these factors. And so that's something that's available to the public as well.
Generally, will they accept your findings?
Generally, yes, absolutely. When it comes to actual delineation reports being submitted, yeah, we go through quite a bit of scrutiny by the agencies to make sure that those boundaries are correct and they're pretty much accurate down to the one meter diameter. So.
Well, you asked me, you, you constantly say this, we're just using this in here, it's 26 acres, but maybe 26 acres aren't all in the wetland, you know, partial of it is. So they would hire you as a contractor to come in as consultant and make sure that if it is 26 or if it's only five or 10, then you would send your recommendation to DSL that, no, not all 26 acres are a wetland.
That's right. Yep.
So the expense is then on the landowner to hire you to do the job?
It is, definitely. The expense is on the landowner, however, that expense is going to be there upfront. If they're looking to develop the property, you know, even if the LWI didn't locate anything on it, they could have hydroic soils on the site. There could be multiple factors that could create wetlands on that property. There could be multiple factors that could create wetlands on that property that might not have been caught by local wetland inventory or the national wetland inventory. And ultimately, that, that is up to the landlord to make that information known if they decide to develop.
Thank you.
Thanks. So at this time, do we want to move on to people who want to comment on this? Do I have two people who would like to make comments on this? Pat Snack?
Good evening. I am Pat Snack. Uh, thank you, Mayor Milligan and councilors. Suzanne has put up with me for the last, since January, when I received a letter about the inventory and that it was happening and I attended the planning commission. And so, uh, it was to my horror to see that most of my land was designated as a wetland and I really knew nothing about it. And so I've spent time with her and I really appreciate all the time she's put up with me and coming to meetings and, and talking to other people about what this all meant. And I, and now I do know that, uh, in order, I can change the, well, the map can be changed. I recognize that. Um, but I did hire someone. I went, after my first meeting here, I was told that, or I learned that it costs a great deal to mitigate wetlands if you have anything. And I don't have any big plans right now for my property, but looking at that property, I knew I couldn't sell it as is for very much money at all unless I had this done. And so I did hire, um, that ESA company to come in and they did a one-day study. They took 60 test holes or plots or whatever they call them. I just went out and pulled up all the little red flags the other day that they've stuck in the ground. And, um, so, and then they showed that this is a lot less than the 26 acres that I have now. And in order to get a definitive delineation, I was told by Wallace, I saw his letter, I believe, in there, uh, that I have to have another couple of days done where they can just really drill down to where it actually is. Uh, so that'll take more time. And then he did tell me he would send that information to DSL to get that changed. But the most, the biggest reason I had it done right away was because I didn't, I knew that I had to have it done in order, if I wanted to sell it anytime in the next, oh, five or 10 years, that I, I needed to know what was, what was wetland. And if anything, it's being farmed right now. And so, and it has been for forever, as far as I know, certainly before we bought it. And, um, so that's, that's why I had that done. So do you have any questions?
Any questions?
And maybe you don't want to share, Suzanne, but what is, what is the cost or did they provide you a quote on the cost of the survey?
Well, I, I spent quite a bit of time with him emailing and he spent some time doing the map. And they were there for, like I said, most of one day and I wrote a check for over $3,600. And I did hire a lawyer and that was my, I didn't know what else to do, so I did that too. I wrote him a check for $2,000 and then he went off and had a baby inside and wrote something.
Well, he got your money, so.
Hey, got my money. That's all it accounted, I guess.
And did they, did they quote you on the second one that?
Well, if one.
They could submit, because what he's saying is the second test, if, if you want to submit this to DSL, you have to do a more in-depth.
More in-depth. And that'll take two days. And if one day in doing all that information with this $3,600, I'm like, no, maybe yes. He didn't, I didn't ask him for a quote. I do understand that once it is sent to DSL, that map is good for five years and then it can be, um, re-admitted or?
Extension.
Extension, I believe is what I did, I was told. And Eric will probably know that.
Yeah, it's a request for reconsideration.
Okay.
But your understanding too is if you wanted to sell this or develop this, you were going to have to do this anyway, right?
Well, now I know that, yes. Or whoever was buying it would, but they wouldn't be probably offering me much money if I, they at least didn't realize it was less than.
Thank you.
Did, uh, you said you needed a couple more days. Was that of field work that a consultant would come in and do at some time in the future?
Yes.
Is there, and perhaps this is a question for you, Suzanne, is there an advantage to sort of, if, if this is ultimately changed, the, the wetland designation in this particular parcel is changed based on the, the consultant work and so forth, the on-the-ground work, is there an advantage to having that done before a wetland inventory is updated or, or revised in any way or?
The wet, sorry, the wetland inventory is?
Well, if it's, if it's, yeah, or?
Um, I suppose one advantage would be on the original local wetland inventory maps. But like I mentioned, that there's a kind of automatic process that once DSL approves the wetland delineation that was done or will be done, then that, that's the new refinement layer mapping for that property. So if there's not like a special hearing, notice, come back to council, get that approved, it just, it automatically becomes.
Yeah, this doesn't create a burden of proof that you have to rebut.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, that's the.
Or application to.
This doesn't create some standard that you have to overcome.
Okay. Yeah, that was my, that was my concern. But this letter basically says that DSL has approved this and it's pretty much what the map's going to be.
Um, that, the email that's on your desk today is from Jennifer Brown, DSL, is saying she went back and looked at this Pat Snack's properties, um, set of wetlands. There's a group of them, I think they call it map unit six. And, um, they're found to be significant for, I think it was three reasons that were outlined in there. So she's saying that, that that significance wouldn't change, but that the actual mapped boundary would change once we get.
Could change.
Yeah, it will, it will.
Sure.
Yeah, so where, how much, you know, smaller or bigger, I mean, it's like, oh, it'll get smaller. I can't imagine it'll get bigger, but, um, that will be determined through, once that, those additional test sites get done on site and it's going to be to DSL for approval.
Thank you. And, um, next, Brian?
Uh, I've provided testimony at the planning commissioner level and have been following this process for some number of years as a property owner with a creek running through it, like Mrs. Stein, if I have had concerns over time. I'm on the other end of that process where I've actually had the detailed studies done because I had a project going that ran into difficulty and, and found out how long it takes to get a process through the Division of State Lands. You'll want to know about those things well in advance before you put any money in the ground in that process. But I wanted to speak in favor of the proposal that you have before you. It, it isn't the best information, but it is better than what we have right now. And when I started with, with my property, basically had a floodway map. And the accuracy of that information is, again, uh, not very specific to an individual piece of property, but it's, it's better than nothing. And one thing I, my view is to try and stay out of any place that says it's a floodway because it's a poor place to develop anything. But, uh, having gone through the stage, spoke about earlier, where I literally called up the Division of State Lands and said, hey, I want to take out a, a crossing on the creek and put in a bridge, would you come out and tell me, you know, where the best spot to do that is and kind of where the wetlands would be on my property? And they did come out and do that at that time.
Five, four, three.
Later, when I actually got ready to, to start my project, actually had the professional wetland engineers come out and do the survey work at a detailed level. And so for my property, the wetland inventory actually doesn't have an impact because included in the inventory document is the delineation statements that, that show the detailed work that had already been filed with them through the, the wetland consultants that I use. But it's a challenging process, but as the city went through and, uh, kind of surprising to me, you can have property that ends up requiring a wetland delineation and/or mitigation even though it's not on the creek. I wasn't terribly surprised because I've got a creek that I know floods and, and, uh, so I wasn't shocked by that. But I had another piece of property that was well off the creek and ended up in wetland issues with it like the city was. So having, having the information upfront is helpful, but when it's only accurate to a half acre size or whatever, it can still be a problem. The bigger concern I have with the body of, of legislation that you've got going through is that it's still, even though we're, where you're identifying significant resources and you're taking action to protect them, that's fine, but the, the financial costs for the other wetlands that we're not protecting is still substantial in terms of the buildable lands inventory for the city. So if, if you have a parcel and it has 30 acres of wetlands on it, even though it's not on the creek, the, the cost to mitigate that land, to do the studies and to file the information, to pay in order to develop it's about $100,000 an acre. Well, currently that's about the value that county is putting on land for development purposes inside the cities. So while we're protecting some wetlands, the real issue in my mind is that we still have a lot of, of conventional wetlands that are not going to be developed because the cost is too high to mitigate those lands in, in order to do the development. So the smarter thing for some of the doers to keep farming it instead of looking at actually having that land become available for residential purposes in the city. So while this is a step forward, in my mind, it still doesn't help solve the problem, which is along with the city and area where we've got a lot of creeks flowing in from around the sides and we've got a fair bit of wetland here, including areas that are wetland soils even though they're not kind of on the creek. And I think those things are going to continue to be a major obstacle for the city moving forward and finding buildable lands for housing. And one of the reasons the city had a successful period of time in terms of its budget and financial history was that we had a fair level of development going on in the community. And we haven't had that in, at least since about 2007, so the last 10 years or so. And I think we need more develop, developable land in the, in the community. And, uh, this, this action in terms of wetlands isn't going to help because we still have obstacles created by the wetlands even though, even though we're not, quote, protecting all of them. So I would encourage your support for the, for the motion before you tonight and it'll, it'll at least be a step forward. Thank you.
So is it time for any further questions of council? Those are the only two people that I had signed up to speak on this matter. Is there anyone else that you, Suzanne, that wanted to?
Maybe just ask, I guess, if there's any chance to sign up that would like to speak to the issue before you close the hearing.
Is there anyone else? Okay, then we'll, we'll close the hearing. So at this point, we would, we would be looking for a motion to approve, I believe. There's language.
I'll make that motion. I move if the modern city council approved legislative amendment 18-01 to adopt the local wetland inventory and related amendments to the comprehensive plan and city code.
Second?
So you moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Suzanne, to be clear, then, next we'll bring you back in, actually adopt amendments.
Correct.
Yeah. Just be sure you pass this motion.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Then we'll move forward to that next action on that. We're going to move on to item number two, which is adopt resolution authorizing state park grant application.
Okay, it's done. I got to see how warmed up. Okay, um, so, um, excited to share with you, the Parks and Recreation Board has been meeting and one of the tasks we were working on is looking at the, in our Parks Master Plan that was done in 2008, um, there's a list of park improvement projects. And so we were going through to see which ones had been done and which ones still needed to be completed. And we found that we were, um, marking off most of the projects on that list and that it was time to get back in and revisit the capital improvement plan for our Parks Master Plan and get some citizen feedback and comments on the priorities for future park improvements. So, um, the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department has annual funding available to help local governments with their park planning and park projects. And so one of those grant programs is targeted towards cities that are less than 10,000 population, so we just barely in there, um, to update or to develop parks' plans. And so the resolution before you tonight is to, um, to get the council's support for staff to go ahead and submit a, a planning grant application to Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to update our Parks Master Plan and that list of improvement projects and also to try to develop a little bit more design and plans around some of our, um, parks that we're looking at making some improvements to. For example, the skate park we've been looking at, so it's one of the projects that we'd like to see have more of a permanent concrete structure in the future. And that's not in our, anticipated in our current park plan. So we want to get that in there so that when we do go apply for grant funding, it will be, yes, this is a project that's in our plan. So kind of important to have that done and updated. The applications are due May 15th. Um, the Parks and Rec Board did recommend that the city submit the grant application or support of it. There's a 40% match requirement, so I'm estimating that'll probably be, that'd be about $10,000 to $12,000 of the city's match funding that would go towards, um, the plan update, which is probably around $25,000 to $30,000 to do that work. We hired consultants after going through and getting proposals from various different consultants that would do that work. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about that.
Don't need money in part for?
Yeah.
I think it'll last. Could this be, is this STC?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think this is, it's time to move the, the, having been a liaison to the park, uh, Parks and, Parks and Rec Board for a number of years, you know, the, the number of, of projects that have been checked off is significant. Uh, the big items in particular, uh, we have a new community development director that may have a, would like to have a chance to put a spin on the, you know, what are parks look like. Um, you know, I'm, I'm urging that you all to, to be supportive of that.
And Suzanne, just a quick question. A consultant would be hired to write a grant?
No, to, to the actual parks' plan update. Yes, no, I would be willing to have, yeah.
So Suzanne, what, what are the costs associated with updating the, the master plan? It says in here, you know, we anticipate the cost to be somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000. What do we get for that?
Yeah, so, um, we, we're thinking, so it's been, what, about 10 years since the last one was done? So we're not envisioning the, necessarily a full-scale go out and do, um, for example, one of the elements of a parks' plan is an inventory of all the existing parks. So, um, we have a good base, um, layer of information on our parks. I just need to update some of that with the projects that. I just need to update some of that with the projects that have been completed so far. So there'd be, you know, certain, I guess, specific elements that we target when we develop kind of what we're looking for in our proposal when we go out and ask, you know, consultants to provide an estimate for that work. But certainly, we know the capital improvement plan, that's the list of projects that'll have cost estimates that go with each of those projects, having a little design, like a plan design for, say, if we want to look at improvements to the Monmouth Recreation Park, you know, what would, having a couple of different options, what would those look like? And then having a consultant help us actually get some feedback from citizens in the community on, you know, specifically what they would like to see and improvements needed and how to prioritize those. So those are kind of some of the key items that I could see coming from it, and then whether or not that would pay for, you know, maybe looking at our parks SDC rate, and is that right now with that new project list? That would be another item to consider and make sure we get it fully, you know, updated and reflective of that. So, yeah.
And just to add a note, when we did the original, I believe it was $50,000.
Right. And I know I've looked at this, and most of our development is to the south, and the parks are not really strong in the south. And so that's one area you're looking at to try to improve that end of it, because that's what we're expanding, and that our parks are pretty weak in the south.
Yeah, yep, I think that goes into it as well as the land acquisition and then looking at where it makes the most sense, on areas that may not be fully covered or within, you know, residents that are not within a half mile of an existing park are the ones we kind of target for that, so, yep.
All right, so this is resolution 1859, a resolution authorizing the city of Monmouth to apply for a local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to update the Parks, Monmouth's Parks Master Plan and delegating authority to the city manager to sign the application. So do I have a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution supporting Oregon Parks and Recreation Grant to update Parks Master Plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? Hearing none. This is going to take a roll call.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Beltz?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to our next item of business, which is the second reading and adoption of the beekeeping ordinance. And is this yours, Scott?
Yeah. Yes, yeah, so basically, this has been discussed on several occasions, most of the last meeting we had a discussion. ID behind is we've got, had a property come up in town that has multiple beehives, and then this was proposed to kind of limit that to see if that was a good management tool for that. So if the ordinance was passed, you've got limit the hives to two, you've maintained in good condition, make sure inactive bees are actually inactive, and then the honey production be local only, kind of personally used. Subissue became out last meeting, there was a discussion of whether something like this could also be treated as a nuisance, and so we actually did have a report of a nuisance, we actually filed a nuisance. In this case, though, the way the system works is we don't have, that's not a specific code violation right now because there's just nothing there, it's silent. So we would need to have the council involve that as a separate process to declare it a nuisance, then figure out how we're going to evade it. I put it here because it was obviously directly related. If you wanted to go the direction, depending on what you do at the ordinance of a nuisance, we were bringing the impact out at a separate occasion because that would be a separate action.
Okay. Any questions, or Scott? We have one citizen who'd like to make a comment on that. Now, would you please come forward?
Did you help me to sign anything, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, no. We've got you here for.
Okay, and other speakers have been up here, but they haven't signed in. I just didn't know how closely.
Only for citizen comments, because we've got you guys signed in.
All right. So this is a tough one, and I was reflecting on the fact that I've been swarmed before, and it's rather disconcerting, and a dear friend lost her husband to a bee sting inside of 15 minutes, so this is not an easy decision. In the end, I'm uncomfortable with micromanaging what happens in my backyard, and so it's tough. If you're going to, if you're going to look over the fence at what I'm doing in my backyard to see if I'm doing the beekeeping, what else might you be looking over the fence for? I don't envy you this decision at all. That's a tough one, and I appreciate your consideration of it tonight. I would endorse adding it to the nuisance ordinance already in place. Otherwise, things like this can just mushroom in terms of policies that you're setting. So, thank you.
Thanks. So this is an ordinance relating to the keeping of bees, and I'll declare it's passed as second reading, and this will be ordinance number 1380. Anyone like to offer a motion?
I move approval of an adoption of ordinance 1580 regarding the beekeeping in residential areas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Scott, can you, can you take me through the process of this nuisance? So now we, now we have somebody who made a complaint.
Yep.
What would the, what would that look like to get this resolved minus an ordinance, specifically saying you can only have two hives?
Correct, yeah. So in this case, it's something that's not in our code. So there's a blanket category that's.
Can you turn the microphone to you more, please? Thank you.
I was saying something bad. Yeah, so this is, it's unspecified.
Enumerated.
Enumerated, don't worry. So what you'd have to do is actually say that in this case, we do consider a nuisance, and then decide what we want to do to take action on that. So it'd be very specific just to this case.
You would actually have a hearing?
So we would adjudicate that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so you could have, yeah, so in this case, you know, it's like, okay, then you go through it, you could argue it is a nuisance or it's not a nuisance, different things. Interestingly, when I reflected on this ordinance, it's interesting because it's good, because there's always strange things that come up. I kind of looked here, though, at the power and authority that you could have just to create things, and I thought maybe if the council was hostile to garden gnomes, you could start going after garden gnomes, but hopefully with, but the key thing is if you're interested in that, that would be a separate action, we would bring that back.
And it is specific to this instance, it's not a declaration generally of bees as a nuisance.
Right. And then in that, the power that, or the authority that the council has, say we find a nuisance, do we have also the leeway to create a solution that isn't draconian one way or the other, that doesn't cut it off, that says, in this instance, you know, let's limit the number and see how it goes, and then maybe revisit that?
Yeah, you have, what you end up with is abatement. You determine what is the appropriate abatement of the nuisance, and then you order that, and the property owner's required to comply.
And we can take into account things like property size and location and things like that with.
And you could, and some things you could get, I'll give the best example, but there are some trees that don't smell very nice. Unless you say that somebody's got a whole yard full, and it's just really just affecting the neighbors, you, same thing, kind of limit, you could say, all right, you got nine right now, maybe if we got it down to five, let's see if that works.
And just for comment, just because we enact this ordinance that has a restriction of two hives, bees could still be a nuisance, depending on what happened.
Yeah. Other option would be, I think where you started this discussion was, well, you see if the two takes care of it.
Right.
And then, so at that point, if you thought that was the way to go, you could also say we don't want to take action on the, when we bring that back to, do not want to take action on the nuisance, and see if the management tool of the two, the ordinance, would take variable. So you got a couple of different variables you can use.
So, John?
Well, you know, I, I think that in many ways, and I haven't read the, closely, I guess, the nuisance ordinance, but the nuisance is sort of in the eye of the beholder, and so that, that puts us in a position to be making arbitrary sort of decisions. I'm concerned that we might be put into that situation. You know, I, I don't know whether two is the right number or not, but it, but it seems to be a reasonable number, and if two doesn't do it, and they're still a nuisance, then we'll get into our arbitrary discussions that I'm concerned with. But, you know, I, I guess I would wonder, and I understand, and Byron and I heard where you were going with size of property and so forth, I understand that, but I don't know that there's that many outsized properties that, you know, would really make that a little less dense. You know, this would give some recourse here. I mean, this would provide some definitive response to someone. If you, suddenly you, you know, you triple your bee production, your honey production or whatever, that impacts elsewhere, and while maybe a nuisance, it's hard to define that, two to six is an easy definition to me, so. And these are, you know, to the point that the city would be relatively looking over back fences, these are, I assume this would be a complaint-driven deal, and it would provide the code officer with some sort of basis on which to bring action if there is a call to that backyard.
Yeah.
Where I'd be looking for tracking bees in and out.
One more question. For three years, you've had two hives, and we've had no call. Now we're up to six. We moved from five to six. So it's, it's two or five, nobody complains. I can't say that the neighbor next door doesn't put two in, and we've got four, the next neighbor, it's no different than if the guy next door puts six chickens, and the next guy puts six, it's going to smell like chickens all over the place. It's just, we're trying to get a control and not cause problems, and we have talked to the people that have the hives, and they said they would remove them, but they didn't. So you're, you're discussing, I mean, what do you do? So, see, I know she wouldn't file an ordinance, I mean, a nuisance or this, but is it really a nuisance? I'm just saying, I'm trying to put a limit, just like chickens, ducks, and everything else. So we got something to work with, and it means somebody can't come back in two years and prove the four are better, and we change the ordinance. Right. I mean, I'm just trying to get something back into reality, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, does this, does this reach backwards with this cause of removal, did you get time to get into compliance?
Yeah, 60 days or something? Thirty days from the date that you vote, the date it's approved before it becomes effective anyway. That's my.
I know I brought this up last time, but I still have a question of why we limit what they can do with their honey. That seems, again, I mean, is someone going to say, well, I found out that my neighbor is selling it at the farmer's market, and that's against the rules? Why do we really care? I mean, is that really an issue? Why does that need to be in here? Can't people, I mean, an average hive with 25,000 bees can make 40 quarts of honey or something a year. Who's going to use that much honey personally? So, and I know we don't need to monitor it, but why is that even in here?
Yeah, I think the idea was to disincent somebody from trying to make it more of a commercial operation in a backyard.
I just feel like if someone's got two hives, I mean, it's the same as if they have a chicken coop. Do we allow them to sell their eggs?
No.
Does somebody get reported if they've sold their eggs? Does anyone know what people have sold?
No, there's all sorts of things. I mean, it just, I guess, in context right now, somebody's doing something illegal in Monmouth.
Yes, absolutely.
And we don't know about it at the moment.
So I guess that was my point, it's like, it seems like we're trying to make a rule for something that we know is going to be broken anyway.
Well, again, I'll just.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, the general, yeah, the general policy, it's you to make the policy. You know, I addressed this last week, last time, was to protect the residential nature of neighborhoods and not turn every home into a small business raising honey for a commercial operation. That's, that's it. You can say, well, that's silly. I mean, it may be, but that's the, you know, I'm not being defensive about it, that's just generally the policy that we approach toward uses as it is.
Do you already have a rule that states that, where you can't use prior property for commercial production, like anything?
It would come under the zoning ordinance.
Already a rule in effect.
Yeah, that would be, that's correct. You get, you get copies of it of people that start home industries. Susan sends them out. So it's not, it's not a deal where you can't have a home investor.
I guess my, my biggest concern, two concerns are that I don't think it's a good idea to make policy on one case. If everybody around Monmouth was keeping bees and it was getting bad, you know, pet rocks or bee babies that were, everybody's got their beehives and the city has bee swarms all over, that would be one thing, but this is just one case. And then it just, it just rubs me the wrong way to tell people that they can't sell their honey.
So any further discussion? There's a, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Again, this is ordinance 1380. And Phillips, roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Beltz?
No.
Counselor Schinkel?
No.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
Three and three.
And I'm, I know. So that ordinance fails.
I need to follow up. Did you want us to bring back a discussion about having that property?
Yeah, they've already, they've already filed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that moves us on to item number four, which is the police department mobile data terminals.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have a staff report that I'll go ahead and review and take questions. If there's budget-related questions, I have finance director. This is regarding the mobile data terminals. Ten Monmouth Police Department mobile data terminals, MDT's, as it's become, have reached end of life or in need of replacement. The MDT is a police officer's primary work tool and in-car computer, and is utilized nonstop throughout an officer's entire shift. In regards to previous council actions for the past 20 or so years, Monmouth City Council has periodically approved the purchase of MDT's through the annual budgeting process. Background, MDT's are ruggedized laptop computers mounted in patrol cars. There's nothing special about them, they don't do anything special, they're just laptops that we hopefully have in our homes that are extra rugged to, I guess, stand up to the duties that we do and what we take them through. They're essential and necessary piece of equipment serving as a primary communication method between a police officer and the 911 dispatch center. They enable voiceless communication with dispatchers and is a method by which all information related to dispatch call for service is delivered to a police officer in the field. Officers are also able to view calls for service occurring in neighboring jurisdictions, communicate car-to-car with other officers, and communicate with police records personnel. Officers use the MDT to complete field reports, access the law enforcement data system, DMV motor vehicles, records management system, and various other systems that we use that we need internet access for. Discussion, the current MDT's we have mounted in police vehicles have either reached end of life or malfunctioning and require expensive maintenance. They lose connectivity throughout shift, they're too old to support new software. Our MDT's range from, you know, probably being 10 years old to two years old, and we have three different platforms that we currently use. Replacing the 10 MDT's at one time will allow us to be set up, all of them to be set up and programmed the same to assure capability of supporting current and future computer aid dispatch software. All new MDT's will be programmed to function and operate exactly the same, so that officers do not have to worry about knowing the different versions, functions, based on which vehicle they happen to be driving each shift. For careful management of the current 2017-18 budget and the availability of one-time vacancy savings, the opportunity exists to make a bulk purchase of 10 MDT's at a very reasonable rate without impacting the current or future budget. Purchasing the MDT's individually over a period of time, waiting to purchase them at a later date, or purchasing through a lease-to-own program would increase the overall cost by at least 8.2%, as well as continuing other inefficiencies of the old pit exist today. The options that we've put before were purchase 10 mobile data terminals, docking stations, and two-year extended service agreements using one-time vacancy savings available in the 2017-18 budget for a total cost of $38,780. the 2017-18 budget for a total cost of $38,780. Purchase 10 mobile data terminals, docking stations, and a two-year extended service agreement on a five-year lease plan, payments of roughly $8,580 per year, starting on the current 2017-2018 budget year. The total cost over a five-year period would be $42,900, 10.6% increase over option one. And then option three would be request funds in the 2018-2019 budget process, the amount of $38,780, purchase 10 mobile data terminals, docking stations, and a two-year extended service agreement. Staff's recommendation would be using the one-time vacancy savings, the 2017-2018 budget to purchase 10 mobile data terminals, docking stations, and the extended service agreement for a total cost of $38,780.
And so typically, this could, could have been done by the department themselves and Scott without bringing this to us, but they wanted for matters of transparency to bring this to us. So again, we have three options in front of us. So is there any discussion about which options you guys would prefer? Since we have a recommendation from the staff?
I have a couple of questions. What is a vacancy saving?
So it's, we've, as you all know, we've had several officers that have left, and that wasn't really planned for. It's one of those things that it's vacancy savings and the fact that those are salaries and benefits that we didn't have to pay for that plan period, that we didn't have.
So you just shift it from one bucket to another?
Yeah.
They were budgeted, they were budgeted basically for, we budgeted for full staffing, and as you know, from much presentations, that we have not achieved full staffing, and so we do have one-time savings, and this is a very appropriate type of purchase rather than hiring another police officer, for example.
And what would be the expected life of a new machine?
It's probably the same, a simple kind of, I guess, internet search will tell you that most laptops in general are, anywhere from like three to five years is when people are replacing those. And I would say that we have probably gone beyond that. Like Abe was saying, we have some that are still running after 10 years with replacements of, you know, solid, say, heart ribs and batteries and things like that, but I would say on average, probably average use, we're looking at five years, five to six years.
And is 10 your total inventory? Would you be turning over your total inventory?
It's, 10 is our total inventory, we do have other, two other computers that are much cheaper that are in more admin cars, that are not used day-to-day on patrol, and they're cheaper for us, more functional in other meeting settings and things of such. But all of the computers that we're talking about here would be for our full fleet that's on patrol.
And Lieutenant, the cost of $38,780, will that be purchasing the computers that the officers prefer to use, or do they, would they want something better than that?
Yeah, these, and as I've kind of talked about, we have three different platforms, and two of those being roughly the same ones, just the oldest version of another version. We do have two other, they call them GTAC tablets, and as, you know, tablets were, I guess, more popular, and we thought they were more functional and user-friendly for what we do. We've kind of figured out that that's not the case, and our actual Panasonic tablets is what we use are much preferred, you know, by all. So those are what we would be attempting to purchase.
Okay, and you can purchase those with $38,780?
Correct.
Okay. Why is the possibility of leasing them in there, if you were, if they were leased, would that be a better quality device?
It's just the same thing, it's essentially just probably an option that, you know, is, for a lot of people, it sounds better to, you know, say, okay, well, we can maybe afford paying $8,000 a year, it's a big check to, you know, bite off to say, we want to spend $40,000 at one time. So it's another option pretty good.
I would say that generally leases are not the most financially smart way to go, but they do allow, when you do not have the funds, they do allow for smoothing over the course. And so this is an opportunity, given that we have the vacancy savings to do it in a lump sum purchase, that saves us 8% interest.
So what would happen as the money, if this is not approved this budget year? Does it roll back over to the general fund?
Correct, it rolls back into fund balance, and so it would be available for use next year. I will point out that the MDT's have to be bought at some point, and so, and that's why it seems expedient to do it now.
I was just looking at the, one of the later items, which is replacing the roof on City Hall, is also about 30 or 40,000 dollars, so I'm just trying to figure out where, what bucket money comes from.
The same bucket?
Yes, exactly.
One quick item before we move on. Dan Wallace, did you want to come speak on this? We haven't done it yet.
Another tough one tonight. My comments tonight are not in favor of MDT's at this time, but in no way do I want to reflect on the passion and the performance and character of any of our officers who are in the room or not tonight. This is purely from my point of view as a new budget committee member, as I look at this. When I, and I appreciate the need for the, for the things that work for us. As an educator, I always wanted those things in the hands of students that would work for them, and the teachers were as passionate about making that happen for their learners as well. When there's a savings like this to a department, I think it's really a savings to the district or in this case, the city. And, and I know that because the money is appropriate, it doesn't mean you have to spend it. I can't imagine how I'd get ahead of things if I spent everything in the account every month without carrying over and saving some when I could. It feels like, I don't know, it's, it's tough, the priorities. I'm facing conversations in May around per's increases, and they're killing us, and the roof now, and I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, power and light, and oh my gosh, they went over cost, and we might have to raise rates. And it's, it's all going to be pretty tough jumble to figure it out. It's the timing right now of the request that I, that I really question, and so I get the descriptive data. I always want qualitative data, and I, maybe that's there, but I didn't catch the, you know, the quantitative piece, I mean. And upgrades will be needed, MDT's are a really good idea. When I analyzed last year's budget, I think I shared with you, I did a per capita breakdown, and per capita in this city for police department without the bond, it was $239 per month citizen. And the next highest was our finance department at 126. So if you take out contingency and you take out transfers, what's left are library, municipal court, parks and rec, community development, and the senior center. The total for all of those departments together per capita was $141, or about 100 less than one department. That concerns me just in terms of proportion and fairness of service for all things that we need. It's not that we don't need this. I think this money issue though, for me, is more of a people issue. And it's saying, it's as if to say to me as a new member of the budget committee, well, you're nice, but not really necessary, because we have budget authority. So this handout I got on January 30th at the first budget meeting where it says, quote, may be proposed in the 218-19 budget, listing this item, MDT's. It's like, well, nice but not necessary, and, and then I'm thinking it could hold for any of those items on there. Maybe I'll just have to come to every meeting between now and the next adoption and see if, you know, because they were, maybe they're there, and maybe you can discuss them, but then, that's up to you, you are the budget authority, and so that's entirely within your, your Peru. It's just that I question, what's the use of a yearly budget review committee if, if that's the way it's going to be played? I just think that voting tonight on this is a mistake dismissing 50% of your budget committee. And again, it's a good idea, I just think the timing's up for it, even though the money is there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? So.
Can we have one more question? Are the MDT's that you have now non-functional?
We have some, they just require more maintenance, and like I said, some of those, probably the main issue that we have daily is just the software is not, can't be updated on some of these machines. And so what, some of the problems that causes is us to lose connectivity, and so when you're driving down your patrol car or going to a call for service, your computer, you'll lose service, and the only way to fix that is basically to restart your whole computer, and that takes all the different systems we run, probably takes 10 minutes. It's problematic when you're going to emergency calls or service or trying to rely on that for information. So they are working, we can get them back up and working. There are times that we have to take it out of service for maybe days to a week. If we need more help, then we can provide it, I guess, or figure it out, but generally speaking, they are all working right now in some fashion.
Byron, did you have a question? Okay. Well?
Haven't we been buying like two a year?
We don't buy two a year, we buy, I'd say probably every other year.
Every other year, so, so two or four are pretty new, aren't they?
Yeah, we have, those are the ones, the GTAC, the tablets that I talked about are our two newest ones.
John?
Yeah, I have sort of a version to utilizing dollars that was allocated for personnel, now turning that and spending that on, you know, hardware, equipment. However, I think in this instance, we're going to buy these, whether we buy them now or whether we buy them July 1. And regardless whether we, we take out of vacancy savings now, or whether we roll that vacancy savings into a, you know, a forward balance and, and plug that into, you know, an equipment expenditure. You know, you could, you could say, well, it's only three months or so, I'm not so sure we aren't better off as Lieutenant Haynes suggests, I mean, we're fighting these things, let's, you know, let's get them done, we're going to buy them if not now, I mean, it's pay me now or pay me later, and I think we're ahead to do it right now, first of all.
Okay, so we have three options, but I'm trying to figure out how to get down to one option, so.
Well, I have a question about that. Are we voting on this? I mean, this is a departmental discretion to do this, right?
We do, and we just could, we thought we, because it was a different item, that we would bring it forward, and with somebody to talk about, so we would actually have council direction on this. I guess a completely different motion is you could say, Scott, go by the terminals and just, just give me direction by consensus if you want. At this point though, we've kind of asked for direction.
Yeah, the, you know, I mean, the lease piece, you know, is, is fine, I mean, you never have anything, I mean, what you're doing really is you're banking that some of these are going to last longer than what you would be leasing for, and you're going to get more out of it. You know, the number three says we're just going to kick it down to the 18-19 budget.
Will they be the same price then?
Pardon me?
But will they be the same?
Yeah, it might not be the same, might not be the same price. So I'm going to get it off the dime and move that we authorize or direct Scott to purchase 10 mobile data terminals as described in number, in option number one.
Second motion.
Yeah, that gives us something we're dealing with, and we can go no or yes or whatever, but that gives us something to be able to.
So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Does, do you need authority from us to do this?
I'm, I'm, actually, as.
It's just, you're just asking us to get, give you your feedback.
Yeah, like I said, a lot of it's just because it was really something different. Normally, we used to, we don't do a whole lot of this anyhow at the city, when I was talking to Counselor Belz, we aren't a use-it-or-loot-it organization, and typically don't move in these categories. It's usually small things, you know, you saved a hundred bucks here, you go take care of some if you need to, but this is a little different, so I thought it would just be appropriate to.
So you're just letting us know that it's going to happen?
And this $38,000 doesn't always mean it will go to the police department, it just goes to the general fund after July 1st.
Yeah, that's where it would have gone.
So it's been moved and seconded, and any further discussion? Since this is money, do we need to do a roll call?
It's your tradition to do that, legal is required, but it's your tradition.
So, Belz, roll call please.
Hold on.
It's the culture.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Belz?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously, and thank you for that. And we're moving on to item number five, city hall space needs analysis.
Yeah, so this item is taking a look at city hall, well, we had this as a goal to take a look at the city hall, either to look at replacement options, renovation options, there's some configurations you can go through, so what we need to do is take a look at our city hall, engage an architect, so they can do the base space analysis, they can give us some options for what, what things could look like in the future. We set aside $10,000 in my year's budget, when I scanned back over some recent documents, it's probably not enough to get a study done, we probably need 15, so I just ask keep for $5,000 more from the general fund so we can get the study done. So the key things, 10 in there right now, need five to equal 15.
Do we have to hire an architect, or can, is there consulting people that would get good with our basic design? What I'm trying to say is, an architect is a dream a lot of times, you know, I mean, they come in as a foot, and we would, and we've had pretty poor luck on architects in the last two or three projects, has not come close. I'm just asking if.
That's who you talk to, there's no one else who really can do that kind of work, yeah. And it's a matter of how we spec this one, and we've had good luck with like the facilities studying some other things, so, you know.
Any discussion? I moved it, hang on just a second before we go, we also had, Dan wanted to speak on this item.
I just wanted to thank the lieutenant and Scott for being transparent about that last piece on the agenda, that's helpful to everybody. I'm really in the dark on architect, but I'm going to pick up on that, and just a concern, anytime I see the word now, architect in Monmouth, I'm kind of shivering into timbers, wondering what's going to happen next, we may be, and so just, I trust you all are aware of who's who in architect land, and, you know, fool me once, don't fool me twice.
Thank you.
Do we have an architect that we use?
No, no, I would actually put this out for proposals.
Okay.
And then that way you can, you can sort through, you know, price approach, their experience, one thing we want is people to understand public building versus, you know, if they're building grocery stores, that doesn't really help out a whole lot, so.
And this, this isn't a citation for designs or anything like this, this is just to assess the city staff, what we need, how much floor space, that type of.
And some designs. Yeah, we actually want to have them take a look at like, you know, expansion of city hall, a fresh building, at a real high level, I mean, they would just give us some rough, if we had, if we needed, you know, 4,000 square foot, if there's a rough way you could configure it, and then just do the, you know, a hundred fifty dollars a square foot and type it in there, so, nothing detailed at all.
Any further discussion? For a motion?
I moved that $5,000 to the city hall space needs and design project, which would increase the total available project budget to $15,000. And the reason I'm saying, opposed this motion is, we've been kicking this dog for two years, that doesn't mean we're going to get it done, but at least we make a step in the right direction.
I'll say. It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I would just like to say that, and far be it for me to tell you whom to hire, but I found from my own experience that it's often a good idea to have the architect, the engineer, and the builder all working together, so if you have builders who would be doing this kind of a project, just get them to agree in on what the architect, because Royal's very right, they are dreamers.
Yep, need something out of control, absolutely.
So again, this is a money issue, so roll call please.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Belz?
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
Oh, goodness, Counselor Carey?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. And now we're on to item six, city hall roof repair.
Yeah, this is obviously a great item, it's a great use of money. Basically, right now, the city hall roof is leaking, we actually have a classic bucket upstairs, so it's coming through the ceiling, dropping into the bucket, and then it's my designated job to. And then, it's my designated job to monitor the bucket and dump it periodically. So, that's where we're at right now. So, City Hall's had on and off again problems leaking. When I got to the city eleven years ago, the, one of the rooms was affected by some of the main leaking. Only, we wouldn't put a human in there. Had records, we had pool mats down on the floor, so people could actually walk safely through there. We tried to get ahold of kind of a drain issue we had on top, some penetration issues on the building. We sealed that. We had to move somebody into that space from the finance department. That was working. We get bad storms or just maybe with bad wind direction, we would get some problems. We would get some penetration on the walls, but nothing too bad. Then we send the roofers back up to check it, and we have seal problems with where the one drain is. It's basically, it's a rubberized roof. You have to cut it to get around the drain, and those things always contract and move and do things. So, we finally, just recently, about a year and a half, two years, we had to abandon that room again downstairs and move the finance person, detached from their department, took them upstairs and to get them out of that room. And so we thought we had ahold of it, and then it started leaking again, you know, coming through the roof, you know, really bad. And so at this case, we sent the roof companies back up, and they said, "No more repairs. You're shot. This thing's gone." And so at this point, we need to put a new roof on that. Obviously, in some cases, timing isn't the best, because you get a long life out of a roof. And if we do something completely different with the buildings, that's unfortunate, however come, but I can't keep just having the water come in until it collapses. So what we have in the budget, we've got a rough estimate to be thirty thousand dollars. We know that when they open up, there will be damage. And so we're going, that's where we have the extra ten thousand dollars to take care of whatever damages up in the roof. Maybe we'll get lucky, but, I mean, water's coming through, so. So at this point, we'd like to authorize forty thousand dollars. General fund is in good shape. That's a question, kind of back to the terminals, that was directed to the department. General fund's projected to turn back, even with taking out the money for the two buildings that we sold, about two hundred thousand dollars, what we're projecting on the plus side. So, even if you use the forty thousand, we're still on the good side of the fence as far as savings goes this year.
What kind of roof will we put on? Same thing?
Yeah.
Same, rubberized?
Pretty much what you have to do, yeah, fly roof.
And guaranteed for how long?
I guess a long time to, I'm not exactly...
Well, we're trying to stopgap, still, and figure something else out. And it's not going to happen for two, three years.
Yeah.
So, I guess my...
Well, yeah, I guess initially, that's something I could work with Larry Thornton, the building officials, but helping me. The interesting one is, on this case, maybe there's an option to go with a lower grade something. So if they have something that's like maybe a ten-year roof, and there's a twenty-year option, then yeah, we'd probably do the ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a roof expert, so...
How did we come up with these figures, these downward amounts?
Oh, we had a couple contractors review the roof, and they gave us an estimate.
Is it possible to see those estimates?
I don't have them with me, no.
Okay, I'd just like to see what they're, what we're getting for forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's something to be, an interesting check, just like we're, just what, yeah, does the different types of roofs, is it all kind of a standard thing, you know? I'm not sure.
So, so we'd be authorizing up to forty thousand? Okay. And also had a citizen who wanted to comment on this. Dan, come on.
Another good idea. It's leaking.
Yes, I've been in a school where we had multiple buckets of water for a year. Oh, not fun, but they do get emptied. Couple of ideas here. I think the thing that bothers me is I look at this, and then I look at the capital improvements program, and you can see the page where, so very thoughtfully, you know, things are planned by the year, so that you're not slammed with a surprise. And I think as a homeowner, well, I budget, you know, a certain percentage each year for house maintenance. And so, why hasn't something been done for ten, twelve years? It's a huge question to me. And then I'm confused in the staff report, and I just need to hear again where the money comes from. On page two, it's indicated general fund reserves, but on page one, it's indicated from contingency. So I just didn't know which one it was.
I was using the terms generically.
Well, there are different, there are different terms, so which... All right, so is it coming, is the suggestion that it comes from contingency?
It would actually be contingency.
Thank you.
If we were above levels, then we could drop from reserves, but that's more complicated.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I'm with that. Is there, I don't know the age of the building. I know when you start digging into some of these old buildings, you can be surprised by asbestos. Is that something that you've considered? Because once you let that cattle worms out, you're, you're kind of committed.
I've never heard a comment about asbestos. We've done some assessments, so I would think that would be a low possibility, but...
When was it built?
Thirty-five.
It's not a low possibility.
We've had building assessments and no one has spoken.
Okay, then, yeah, it's kind of franked off. Again, this is not an emergency, if it's been known for how long. And I just think in this instance, it would be a better bet to do your space needs analysis, get a big picture look before diving into this, because your big picture look might change how you prioritize things, including this particular need. And, you know, just because the money's there doesn't mean you have to spend it. You can carry it over. Going to be my mantra.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this point, staff is recommending that we authorize forty thousand, up to forty thousand dollars to replace the City Hall roof. Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize up to forty thousand to replace the City Hall roof. I'll second it for a point of discussion.
I'll second what you're talking about.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So Scott, if the money doesn't get authorized, how, how will you handle this until, until the roof?
Counselor Johnson has the answer.
Which is?
Dump the bucket.
Keep dumping the bucket.
And then hope nothing collapses.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, my own thought is, is that if you can isolate and identify a, you know, options for a, sort of a shorter term deal, that might be a good idea until that space needs analysis is done. You know, I, and I don't know, we'll just see what comes back, but I'm going to guess that that building will probably continue in some form. And so if that's the case, then it's going to need a roof. So, so it may not be in its exact current form. We don't know that yet, but, but it's going to need a roof. And if it goes away, you know, we've invested for a couple of years, I don't know, especially if you've got a lower option, or if it's not.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
Darren, did you have...
I think I say, I've been in a building that's had a corner collapse on it from a flat roof and a drain, and you're talking a lot more than forty thousand to fix it when you have that happen. And all the equipment, everything else that's in there with it. So I guess if you've got, have you gotten at least two, two proposals or two vendors that said they don't think it's...
Just to make sure, but yeah, but yeah, but it was, it was up two thirty.
Right. Well, but I mean, if you had at least two, you know, different folks look at it and say it can't be repaired, do you really need to get it replaced?
Yes.
And if so, then I guess I believe it's probably smart on our part to take care of it before it becomes a major issue, but a collapse, like I said, would be a whole lot more.
What's it?
Having, having worked in a building in downtown Salem that was ten years old and condemned, I can assure you, it's frightening to work in a building where you hear things creak and crack and groan and moan and howl. And so, just given that, hopefully, we can get something at slightly lower cost that will last us a few years until we figure out what we're going to do. It's probably a pretty good option. And it costs twenty-three million dollars to fix the transit wall.
If you can give me twenty-three million for a new City Hall? I'd like to know.
Only if it's condemned.
Okay. I can work on it.
My, my concern is, hopefully, it's everybody's concern, too, is dumping forty grand into this and then, you know, the timing of it. So that's where I'm, that's where I'm struggling right now. Did they give you an idea of the level of risk?
Hang on. Dan?
Please, white, please, focus.
No, yeah, we don't have anything detailed. It's more just when you open things up. Yeah, so we basically don't know until we get everything opened up.
Right. And if you're looking at a new building, you're, you're two, three years out. I mean, it ain't going to happen tomorrow. And what I'm trying to do is protect what we have. We've already lost part of the wall once, and the back end had to replace it already, and it overflowed and washed out that whole back chil. So, and I don't, I don't want to spend a dime on the building. But we still have to survive and live. And so, that's my point, is split the forty thousand.
Well, with Darren, the same thing. I want to, yeah.
So, so, we sit at the site, we don't sit in that office every day. We need to take care of the employees that are there every day, as best we can. So, that's my two cents on why we should move forward on this.
We are starting the dry season, and I think we might not have, I mean, I'll go out the door tonight and it'll be raining out there. But generally, from May through October, we don't get a lot of rain. And I'm still, I'm just a little bit nervous about this, just pulling this forty thousand dollar figure out of the air. I'd just like to see some specifics for it.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Phil?
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
And that passes five to one. Any council comments? Council comments?
I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Well, I would like, last, the last meeting, we, I noted that we had a, a comment from a, a letter from a citizen, lives on Myrtle, who was concerned about the loud noises of vehicles, trucks, Jake breaking into, you know, into town, coming in from the north and perhaps from the south. And Chief Talon, it sounds like, you know, attributed that to Lieutenant Haynes, and thank you for following up on that. You all got copies of the, of the email. I think that was thorough. I think that, that Mrs. Calagery was appreciative of that, and I thought that the response was good, made tons of sense. And, you know, I know you guys are working on if there's ways that that can be mitigated under the restrictions that you have. But just a public thank you for doing that. It was, it was exactly the kind of responsiveness we'd like to see, so thank you.
And I would like to point out that at the last council meeting, we had a resident, Elliot Dickinson, come to talk to us about the training burn that occurred at the house next door to him, and he was concerned about asbestos and leg being deposited on his property. And I thought we were going to put it on a work session.
Okay, on the next work session.
Okay, so at the next work session, it would be nice, I think if we could invite Chief Stangy to come to that meeting. And I also would like to have more discussion about this so-called survey that's about economic development.
Yeah, I already got that.
On Facebook page.
And also, I wanted to report on something fun that happened here in town. The PTA sent out a notice that the Monmouth Elementary was doing a read-a-thon for their fundraiser, and, and I caught wind of that. And so, I thought about sponsoring a, a class, and I thought, well, that'd be kind of cheap for the mayor just to sponsor one class. So, I looked at what I could do to sponsor the reading, minutes of reading for the whole school. And so I challenged him to read twenty-five thousand minutes. Now, I was told they had read, but like thirty-nine thousand the prior year, but they actually read eighty thousand. But this year, they just, they blew the doors off. They read over a hundred and ten thousand minutes, between two hundred and seventy of them, over eleven days. And, and the fun was that it challenged me to read along with them. Not that I don't read, but I just picked a book that I hadn't, had on my shelf that I wanted to read for a while. And I actually read five hundred and fifty-five minutes of that book and got it completed during those eleven days with the kids. So it was a fun thing that I got to do. And it's awesome to be in an auditorium with about five hundred elementary school kids and hear them go, "Mr. Milligan," or "Mayor Milligan." You know, it's just, it's just so much fun to be part of the community. And then, through my bus driving and through my robotics and working with elementary kids, it's just fun to be around them and see where our future is. And know that through our schools throughout this district, that they're in good hands. And, so, but it's just fun to be a part of that community that I haven't been a part of for a while. And, so I wanted to leave it on that kind of note. We are going to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, maybe you want to do, I hate to do it to you, but I need to take away your vote.
Oh.
I twitched when you voted. And if you'd voted yes, I would have called timeout, because it struck something in my, in the back of my head about voting. And I'm referring to seven point oh one of the charter, which says, "The mayor shall have no vote except in the case of a tie, provided, however, that upon the final passage of an ordinance, the mayor shall have no vote." So the ordinance still failed because it didn't obtain a majority, but your vote shouldn't be recorded as a vote on the ordinance. This is the one, one exception, the one case where you don't break a tie.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, that's why, well, that's why I have veto power, if I need it.
Well, that's true. That is your vote. That is your vote. That's right.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Yep.